Good evening, it is now six thirty and I will call to order the Monday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and seventeen Burnsville Planning Commission. Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. Glad everyone made it here safe. Staff, thanks for coming. Big trip from your office over, so good deal. The first item on our agenda this evening is the actual adoption of the agenda. Commissioners, do you have any changes or last-minute emergency items for the agenda? None from Commissioners? Staff, any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I would stand for a motion. Moved by Commissioner Levy and second by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay. And...
I abstained.
Oh, you abstained. And it passes four to zero. Yes. Our second item this evening is approval of the minutes from April tenth, two thousand and seventeen. Commissioner Benke or Commissioner Workman, do you have any comments or changes to the minutes for the April tenth meeting?
Just a quick comment. Regina, thank you for documenting my issues.
You're welcome.
Staff, any changes to the minutes? Any comments?
No changes.
No. Commissioners, with Commissioner Benke's comment noted, I would stand for a motion. Moved by Commissioner Benke.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post say nay, and the motion carries three, zero. That brings us to number three, which is a public hearing. It's an application for the city of Burnsville to consider amendments to the city code Title Ten, Chapter Four, Section Two, Title Ten, Chapter Seven, Section Eight, Title Ten, Chapter Thirteen, Section Three. In addition to definitions and standards allowing beekeeping as an accessory use in R one A, one family rural residential zone. I got through that without messing that up, Regina.
Good evening Chair.
Ms. Dean, you have the floor.
Good evening Chair, members of the commission. We had that stated long so that it would allow me enough time to get up here to the podium, I guess. Anyway, so before you tonight is a proposed ordinance, and this is really based off of a kind of a history back in two thousand and twelve. The city was approached by an individual that wanted to raise bees on their property, and it was contemplated by council at their January two thousand and thirteen all-day work session. They do this every year, contemplate different issues and decide if they want to move forward on certain issues for possible ordinance amendments. At that time, it was decided, no, we don't want to make any changes to our ordinance. The city code at the time did not allow for beekeeping. So fast forward to when we recently made changes to our property maintenance code. It specifically prohibited or had language that was revised in the code that spoke to infestation, did not include language specific to beekeeping, and there was concern that maybe there is some confusion on how code is interpreted. Also sparked by a resident approaching, actually this was, the city staff was approached by an individual resident that wanted to raise bees. And so at that discussion sparked staff looking at our current city codes, and that's when it was realized that based off of current changes that were included in our city code that would not really allow beekeeping. So after that, we approached the council again at work session in March. At that time, direction was given to city staff to pursue a proposed ordinance and bringing that forward to Planning Commission. Specific direction from council at work session was to look at the R one A zoning district, which is considered southwest, most of southwest Burnsville. Specifically, we do allow agricultural-type uses within that zoning district, so they felt that was the most appropriate zoning district to allow this. As part of moving forward with proposed draft language, that's before you tonight and explained in your report, staff, whenever we do potential ordinance changes, it's very common practice for us to reach out to our market cities to see what they do. So I did reach out to Apple Valley, Bloomington, Brooklyn Park, Eagan, Edina, Lakeville, Maple Grove, Minnetonka, Plymouth, St. Louis Park, and Woodbury. Two cities explicitly prohibit beekeeping. There are other cities that allow beekeeping only in their agricultural-type zoning districts. And then there are cities that allow beekeeping in all of their zoning districts, for example, Edina. They allow beekeeping in any zoning district as long as you can demonstrate that you meet specific performance standards and as long as you apply for a license or permit for this. And that was a trend with a couple other cities, too. But again, based off of direction from council, staff did put together a draft, proposed ordinance for your consideration. That speaks only to R one A zoning district. We did include some definitions as related to beekeeping to give property owners an idea of what is a beekeeper, what is beekeeping, what is a hive, and then a definition of unusual aggressive behavior. And that gets to the specific general provision section of city code that we're proposing that beekeeping is allowed within R one A. But any of the hives shall meet accessory structure setbacks, which are displayed on the PowerPoint slide, which are a fifty-foot front yard measured from the property line, minimum five-foot side yard setback. For corner lots, a street side yard would be forty feet, and then a rear yard of eight feet. So any structure or hive would need to meet the setback requirement. And that it would be the beekeeper's responsibility to ensure that, one, the bees are not aggressive in nature, and that a water source and adequate living space are provided for the bees in this. Based off of research, if water is provided and that bees have a proper flyaway zone, that this can help control the bees and make sure that they're in a safe, habitat-safe environment. And then we want to explicitly state that within R one A, that beekeeping is an allowed use. So that's also stated within the proposed ordinance. As far as planning considerations, staff is certainly proposing recommendation, but for your consideration, allowing this ordinance to move forward would allow beekeeping within the city. It's currently prohibited or not allowed. It would provide R one A zoning district property owners more flexibility. It would also allow, or I'm sorry, majority of the market cities do allow beekeeping in some form in one zoning district or another, or all. So we would be in line with at least the market cities. And beekeeping, just to note, is a best management practice. Having an ordinance to allow beekeeping is a best management practice, which is listed in the Green Step Cities program, which we are a part of. We're currently a step four city, so add a little star to our checklist there. With that, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed ordinance as in front of you, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Commissioners, questions of staff? Commissioner Levy.
Could you define a market city? I saw the list, but what does a market city mean?
So each year, I believe, the council has a policy, has a list of market cities, and it's comparable typically in, I believe, population, employment, and it's my understanding that HR uses this to look at city staff salaries to compare ourselves with other. So we use that grouping of cities to do other analysis as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Benke, you had a question? I saw you raised your hand.
He knows me very well. R one A currently has a lot size of two acre minimum?
For lots with sewer and water, there's a one-acre minimum lot size. For lots without sewer and water, there's a two-acre minimum lot size.
And we don't have a lot size listed in the standard here, so if, okay, so we're just strictly sticking with that. I guess if lot sizes were changed within that section of the ordinance, this might be looked at at the same time. The appropriateness of this as a use.
It could be.
I guess the only kinds of things I'm seeing here that I was curious about is, did we have any method of determining a max size of hive on a particular lot of that size? Is there any research that might suggest something along those lines?
In our particular language that we're proposing, we're keeping it open and flexible. However, some cities do put criteria that based off of your lot size, you're allowed up to two hives. If you're, for example, if your lot size is ten thousand square feet or less, you can have two hives. If it's ten thousand to twenty thousand square feet, you could have three or four, and on up depending on your lot. But no, we did not put any prescriptive measures like that in the language.
And then the other element that I saw was that we did have setbacks. We're treating it like an accessory structure. I think a bee has an issue to a neighbor. Is there any way that we could also, or should we have a distance to adjacent structures? For example, if we've got an eight-foot rear yard setback, as you had there, and the neighbor's house is on a side yard and is actually ten feet away, you know, is that a good situation to allow it in? And believe me, I'm very much in favor of this as a use here.
That could be something for consideration. I don't know what the appropriate distance is as far as best management practices.
And that's sort of why I was asking about the lot size, because if you look at one acre as a minimum, for example, because that's essentially what we've got is a minimum-size lot, and then took away the setbacks and looked at an adjacent structure, I mean, this is just a math exercise. How close could two structures physically be, clearly if you're keeping? I know a gentleman who keeps bees. It's at the far back of his two-acre lot. If there was another house on the other side of that lot line, for example, it might be significantly closer to that house than his, and is that a problem situation?
I don't know.
I don't either, that's why I'm asking.
Although, you know, part of the reason behind including the aggressive behavior clause would be if, for some reason, these bees do go on the attack mode, that we can rely on that language to help rectify any situation. If I can ask Deb, do you know what the main structure setback might be for the rural zoning district? Off the top of my head, I'm not recalling.
Yeah, it's, the side yards are ten feet on each side yard. Rear yard and front yard are both fifty feet.
Thank you.
So a side against a rear could conceivably have a hive eighteen feet from another house the way it's currently written. And all I'm suggesting is perhaps there could be a look at language to keep that proximity from becoming an issue between neighbors. Nope, that's it, Chair, thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Dean, can you, for the benefit of our viewing and listening audience, explain what procedures will be taken when there is aggressive behavior of the hive, of the bees, or if there is a lack of maintenance? Sometimes the owner leaves and the bees are on their own, and the owner is gone for a long time, and the bees just are left there unattended and display aggressive behavior. What would happen?
Any property maintenance issues, or in this case, aggressive behavior, would be a code enforcement issue. So, one, if it were visualized by a code enforcement staff driving by, that's something that a case would be started. As far as if it was a complaint from a neighbor, it would be started that way.
I'm really concerned, Mr. Chair, about, something happened, the bees can just start to display aggressive behavior one day. It could rain that day, and then with the heat afterwards, bees react to that. And let's say they swarm over to the other, to the neighbor's house, and they start to be on their shed or something like that. All the bees move over there, and their children or their people in that other house, what happens? It's the emergency situation I'm concerned about. Code enforcement, I understand that.
Animal control would be a solution, or, I mean, if it was an extreme aggressive situation, someone could call nine-one-one and the appropriate parties could come out.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Workman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this, are ordinance more geared towards a hobby scenario, or if somebody wanted to start manufacturing honey in their home, you know, with multiple hives? Is there any kind of clear definition on that?
Not specifically, however, any home occupation would be tied just based off of our general code provision requirements, and it would be similar to a urban garden or chickens within the city.
So there's no real concern as far as, I mean, I guess quantity was kind of maybe the bigger concern as far as how many hives, but that could maybe be something that gets addressed if that scenario happens?
If it becomes an issue?
Yeah.
That's how the proposed language is stated now.
So there's room for amendments if need be?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Benke's comments, how do other cities, the market cities, deal with the ten-foot setback and eight-foot and so forth, that distance? Do they have any, do you know if they have any specific requirements? You can't be getting closer than this to the neighbor or whatever?
Yeah, so Edina and I believe it's Brooklyn Park are very specific. They do require a license or permit to be reviewed where you indicate where your hives are located, how far they are from property lines, from other structures. That's reviewed, analyzed, inspected, re-inspected if there's issues. You do need neighbor sign-offs. And so there are more measures in place, more review in place as part of other cities.
Is there some reason we didn't put that in?
We, based off of council direction, we wanted to keep this as flexible as possible and specific to these large lot size properties in our R one A zoning district.
Commissioner Benke.
Yeah, that was where I was going to ask, too. Edina essentially has it available even in their residential area, which could be a ten thousand square foot lot or smaller. So I could see that needing to be more heavily regulated because of the proximity. And here, we're talking, you know, forty thousand square foot lot, minimum forty-three actually. So, you know, four times the lot size is what we're talking about, or more, is what we're talking about here, and strictly down in the southwest, because that's the only area of the city where really we have those size lots left.
That's correct. I mean, there are pockets here and there throughout the city, but for the most part, you're not going to see too many lots in a acre or more in Burnsville.
Ms. Dean, they're not zoned R one A. We just have the R one A in southwest Burnsville, all right? We don't have a two-acre lot in the middle of Burnsville. There's not a zoning change to make it a R one A.
No, the R one A zoning district, we commonly refer to it as southwest Burnsville, but there is a specific boundary, and there is only one R one A district.
Okay, okay.
Commissioners, other questions? This is a public hearing. At this point, I would like to open the public hearing, and if there's anyone in our audience this evening that would like to speak to this issue, we would invite you to come to the podium and give us your thoughts. Please give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Carol Meyer, and I live at thirty-one thirteen South Loop Road.
In southwest Burnsville?
Yes, exactly. And this is, I read the article in the paper a while back about this. It's interesting to me. I'm all for bees. I have no objections to it. But I guess the question, the question that I have, listening to the conversation, is when I'm looking at the, where you have the, you know, fifty-foot front yard and all that kind of thing, it's, this is all pretty small lot. So why is it that we're only allowing southwest Burnsville? And my also, my understanding is, is that the people that are requesting this, I could be wrong, but the people that are, that kind of requested this go forward, they're only on a one-acre lot. So I guess I'm kind of, my concern is, is that some of the things that you brought up with somebody positioning these bees too close to somebody else, or having a lot that isn't real good, and what that, what happens then is, when you bring antagonizers in like that, then it just kind of sets neighbors against neighbors and things like that, not something we kind of like to see, we, you know? So I'd rather see a preventative approach, kind of like, I guess what came to mind was, I was thinking about, and I don't know the details about this, but I remember a number of years ago, there was an issue with hassas, and somebody wanted to have a hassa, and it's kind of like, hassa smoke can be an issue if you're too close. I can see bees being the same thing. If you, if you have enough acreage around you, nobody's even going to know they're there. But if you're on a smaller lot, all of a sudden, the wrong neighbor moves in, it could be a problem. So that's, you know, and I'm not against it, because like I said, I'm all for it. We grow things, we like bees. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We appreciate you coming out this evening. Anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, discussion? Yes, Mr. Benke?
I'm wondering if, I had a thought as that, as Ms. Meyer was speaking there, could we, since we're talking about acre lots, we're talking forty-three thousand fifty square feet, I mean, this is not small compared to a lot of Burnsville. Could there be a way to incorporate language that a hive can be no closer to an adjacent structure as it is far away from the principal structure on the lot? I mean, that could be the way to easily make that work. You know, that way, if some, basically, I think that the process would be, instead of putting it a hundred feet away at the back of the lot, and it's only twenty feet from an adjacent structure, it would need to be no farther, no closer to the adjacent structure than it is from the existing residents. And I think you would automatically get separation by having a standard like that.
Discussion, Ms. Dean?
So just to visualize how this would happen, so you'd have a house on a property, bees somewhere on that property, and then we'd look at the neighboring properties
Right.
to see how close any structure is. And so let's say we have a property, property, and property. They're eighty feet away at the closest point, they're ninety feet away at the closest point, and they're one hundred feet away at the closest point, so it would be eighty...
From the principal structure on the lot.
Okay.
And it would be more than that for any adjacent lot. And as long as that eighty foot from the principal structure on the lot was adequate for separation to the bee hive, it works to make sure you're no closer to the adjacent structures.
So then...
Language could be, in addition to the setbacks, that no hive shall be closer to an adjacent structure, to a principal structure on an adjacent lot than it is from the principal structure on the lot who's making the application.
So the current language, we would not have an application. And then I'm just thinking about, what if someone wants to do an addition, or someone wants to add another structure on their property of some sort of detached garage, then what happens?
Sure, I didn't realize this was an unpermitted, I know that you had that here, but I didn't even think that this was an unpermitted use.
Commissioners, I haven't weighed in, I think, I think staff did an excellent job with this, and I think a couple of things. I do agree that after we expand, if at some point... I do agree that after we expand, if at some point we expand out of the R1, we might have to, to look at it a little differently. And I am, I am not a huge fan of everything coming back to the planning commission, but in the past, we have asked something to come back to planning. And I guess my recommendation is, I would like it to come back to planning in a year if and only if there's been, if our, if there's been some sort of issue, if there's been a, if you can't build to it, or there's some sort of issue, or there's been complaints. But truly, I kind of see this as, this is a great start. We don't have a lot of experience with this in Burnsville. We've started in, in R1A where there are pretty sizable lots. There, there could be a one-acre lot, but typically, if I well of the wear, there's, there's not nine one-acre lots right in a row. There's, there's intermixed, you could have a one-acre lot and a two-acre lot. Really, the last development by Murphy Hanahan is the smallest lots. But I'd like to, I would be in support of it moving forward as, as written, with just some direction to staff that I would say that if it's going to move outside of R1A, we might want to look at some different setbacks. Because I like using our standard setbacks. I like using standard language that's no different from this and accessory structure. And then I would leave it up to staff, whether you think after a year, if there's been no issues, I would anticipate us not seeing it again. But if there's been something you think we should come back and look at, we certainly could, could do that. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I tend to agree with your reasoning there, but I don't think we need to bring it back to, to the planning commission if there is no incident that we need to be concerned about. Let's say it takes two years or three years before there's a first incident. I would, I would leave it to the discretion of staff, rather than putting a timeline, like one year, like you said. Leave it to the discretion of staff. If things work out fine, hey, why bring it back? If other things develop and we need to make changes, then staff can bring it back to us. That's their right to do so.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh.
As I'm on the floor, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind, I think this is, this is a good addition to our city. Our city is step four green city. And I think this, as Ms. Dean said earlier, this is, this beekeeping is a wonderful hobby for those who like it. And all of us love honey. And I think it is consistent with our city being a green city. And again, if there's any problem comes up later on, bring it back to us and we'll take a look at it again. So I'm very much in favor of it as written, and I will be supporting it.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Levy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Commissioner Benke's proposal to be added to it. I like the concept of beekeeping. I think that the simple statement that, again, referring to principal structures between and two properties, a hive shall not be closer to an adjacent principal structure than the main, the applicant's, whatever it is, the principal structure. I think that would alleviate or mitigate the possibility of, minimize the possibility of future concerns.
Ms. Dean, can you re, kind of restate your concerns with that statement and how we would, as a, as a city possibly be able or not be able to enforce that?
So currently, we're not, based off of the proposed language, we're not requiring any type of permit, review, any type of license for this. Concern from staff would be to, how to monitor that, what happens if someone wants to put an addition onto their house, or a structure on their, maybe a structure doesn't exist today on the house because it's a vacant lawn, they want to add something, and how does that impact the neighboring properties? So just something to consider.
Commissioner Benke? I'm sorry, Commissioner Levy, did you have?
It troubles me that we can't come up with some way of saying that, but I understand.
Commissioner Benke?
I, I would actually withdraw that as a suggestion right now. I mean, I think it's a good idea, but given that it's an permitted use, I don't think that I would ever add that to a recommendation on my own part at this point and vote for it. I don't believe staff would have the opportunity to give it sufficient overview. However, if things come back to us later, it could always be revisited.
Okay. Other comments? At this point, I would stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I moved that the planning commission recommend to city council approval of the proposed ordinance changes to the city council as presented on beekeeping.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Singh, second by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay, and the motion carries. 4-0. 5-0. That will go to the, I'm sorry, that will go to the city council on May 2nd, in front of the city council. The fourth item on our agenda this evening is a further discussion on ordinance changes for monument signs from our 2016 Planning Commission work plan. Ms. Dean, you had to leave that in there, didn't you?
I think it was 2015, actually.
Why don't you just stay at the podium and move on to our next topic?
Great. So this is a discussion item, and so actually in 2015, I think it was ended 2015, no, this was added as a work plan item. And then I, because of some staff changes and other important development projects that I'm sure went through, this item got moved and was last discussed at the January 2017 Planning Commission meeting. Planning Commission at that meeting did recommend providing some options to cha, possibly change the ordinance. And again, this is specific to monument signs. Some of that direction was to look at the number of signs that are allowed and possibly put limitations on the limit of monument signs for commercial properties. So, and look at distance requirements, and then also look at how are we currently treating monument signs today? Maybe just a bit of a refresher to what monument signs, what is required in our code as far as design, the look of the sign, the character of a monument sign. So as a refresher, monument signs are considered freestanding signs within Burnsville's ordinance. A freestanding sign is a monument sign, a pylon sign, a pole sign, freestanding sign. You'll see all these examples listed. However, we have specific language that discusses monument signs. And those are pictured on the left, for example. Specifically in Burnsville, monument signs are required to have a landscape design scheme around them or planter box. These are freestanding structures. They're, are required to have the same primary materials as the principal building. And the monument signs are allowed to have two sign faces. Another note about monument signs, these are signs with a maximum height of six feet. And monument signs are required to be at least five feet away from any, any street right-of-way. This is just a listing of our specific monument sign requirements, regulations. Again, you'll see a lot of discussion about the appearance of the monument sign, the lighting, the landscaping around it. So a question came up, how are we treating just the look of monument signs in the last discussion? And I think from a staff standpoint, I think the character of a monument sign is, is adequately addressed, so we didn't provide any additional recommendation on, on how these should look for any commercial site. Allowing a property owner some flexibility, yet still maintaining some consistency throughout a development. We did, however, propose nine different options to consider, different scenarios. And what, what I did, and in your packet, I gave two different scenarios based off of a lot that's under 10 acres with the single building, and a lot over 10 acres with multiple buildings. And I can certainly run through each one of those to show you how those play out. Just in summary, we suggested one monument sign based off of a driveway entry point, one monument sign shall be allowed per building on the property, one monument sign based off of a driver pedestrian entrance point, a sign based off of just a driveway entry point that may be based off of lot sizes, certain properties are allowed more than other. For example, up to two monument signs for lots under 10 acres, up to four monument signs for lots over 10 acres. Then we got into a distance requirement that a lot could have multiple monument signs as long as there's 300 feet apart from monument sign to monument sign. That a lot may be allowed additional monument signs beyond four maximum, but only if a conditional use permit or planning at development approval is sought by an applicant. And then we got into other requirements that a monument sign must be at least 300 feet away from any pylon, freestanding, or any other monument sign. However, menu boards and directional signs were exempt from this requirement. And that, another option would be, in no case shall any monument sign be closer to any other monument sign, or I'm sorry, that any monument sign shall be 300 feet apart from any other monument sign. And this is measured via straight line. So these are just the different examples. Going over those different scenarios, this is Burger King on the corner of Nicollet and County Road 42. So the different scenarios play out, yellow dots indicating where a potential monument sign might be, again, based off of these different scenarios. And I can run through each of these if you want, or we can go...
I don't think you need to right now, Ms. Dean.
We can go back to any of them.
Let's have some discussion. I think I'd like to clarify that staff is not recommending all nine conditions.
That's correct.
I think we have some options in front of us from the standpoint of what is a good, good, good option moving forward. From a simplicity standpoint, I do like number five. It's real basic, up to two monument signs for 10 acres. If you go above 10 acres, it's four. As we looked at our background information, you know, this came up because of the property at five and 42. And to me, that was, as I was reading my background, I felt that was a, once again, I always try to think about this, is what is the simplest way to execute it? What's a simple, clean way? And in some of these cases, I believe it was very restrictive, and there was a couple of options where there could be, you know, a fair amount of signage. So I think there was one option where there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven signs on the property. And I felt the two and four was a, was a good option. Commissioners, with that being said, further discussion for Ms. Dean to explain these options, or do you have questions about these? And can you give, do you feel comfortable to give staff some direction?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Benke?
Yeah, I'm, given the sheer quantity of information here, I'm feeling like pointing out a couple of situations that appear to operate well, in my mind, from the visual clutter standpoint, I think is the best way I can handle this. And looking at the Burger King first, number one, yep. That solution appears to be a good one, unless, if you go to your number eight...
Are we talking about under 10 acres?
These are the under 10 acre, yeah. This is all on Burger King alone right now. In this case, because it has an existing freestanding sign that essentially does the same thing, I can't justify adding the monument signs as well. So I'm, what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to point out the scenarios that work well, and then pick through the ordinance suggestions that would allow that to happen. Given that it already has a pylon sign in that situation, additional visibility doesn't appear necessary to me. If we look at the 10-acre parcels, I gotta do this one by elimination because they are a lot more involved. Can you go, let's go backward from number nine, if we could. I think, to me, that looks excessive. But could it be approved as a CUP? Yes. I mean, it, it does a fairly decent job of spreading them out. I think the biggest issue, if you go to the next one, eight, I think this is why I think that currently the existing ones are where the green dots are.
That's correct.
And that is cluttered, plus the lack of uniformity, the lack of maintenance, the lack of all those things, I think are what makes that problematic for me. The part that I'm bothered by is that, if, looking at the lot line here, Olive Garden is a, is a separate parcel.
That's correct.
But yet it was done as a planning at development to start with, even though it's separate now, it was all part of cohesive design to start with. So if each one of these lots was to be subdivided down the road, it would make even more of a mess. And currently, if we have 300 feet from sign to sign, how does that affect the next lot? Are they then 300 feet down the road because of what is on this lot? And that's where I see the biggest problem, is that that lot might not have 300 feet of furniture. So how do we keep them from having one? Or if they get here first, how does that affect the next lot? I can see why you're not, you've thought this all through too.
It, it's definitely a good point, and, you know, something that you'd have to consider. When we, when I did this analysis, I did it based off of looking at one lot and didn't take into consideration what if all the buildings were demolished and one building was there, or if it was subdivided? And we could go through, you know, 200 different scenarios and what-ifs. But trying to get at this, some simplistic options, that's what's provided with you before you today.
And just to sort of finish, your number seven here, to me, seems reasonable. I mean, to me, it's, you know, they're nicely spread out, they, they can, is a monument sign limited to a single entity on it, or it's just a monument?
So currently, the way Burnsville City Code works is, in commercial zoning districts, you're allowed a maximum square footage of sign based off of the wall signage, or the wall area, wall square footage that you have on your property. And you can divide that up on wall signage, on pylon signs, and you can have like, in a, could have, not unlimited, but you could have a lot of monument signs on your property. And so we don't limit the content per se on the sign. That's something that, as a city, we can't get into. So as much wording as, I guess someone wanted to put on there, they could, as long as they're within the parameters of maximum height six feet, the maximum square footage that that would allow. So not, we can't limit content, but we can be prescriptive on square, square footage.
So, and monument signs are designed to be seen at a slower speed. I mean, it's, they're really more for as you're, as you're going by at a slower speed. So if someone chose to take a rectangular space and subdivide it into two squares and have two people on there, they could certainly do that. Okay, the only other question I had was the issue of the six feet. And I, I know we, I've asked about it before, and I cannot quite honestly remember what the answer was. The, the comment that you had in here was that if there is a berm, a reasonable berm at a three-to-one slope of a maximum height monument, yep, if the berm has a three-to-one slope and the birmingham is incorporated into an overall landscape plan, the height of the sign shall not exceed six feet. Six feet above the top of the berm or six feet above natural grade? How exclusive of the berm?
This is allowing it from the top of the berm up.
Okay, so you're always allowed a six-feet height?
From the top of the berm.
Okay, because, okay, but there again, now we're looking at, the only subjective part of this is where birmingham is incorporated into an overall landscaping design plan.
Right.
Right, okay.
Yeah, they didn't want, I vaguely remember when this was put into effect. And I think the issue was that somebody just kinda put some fill in and, you know, decided to put a sign up. And it's like, well, that's not really, you know, the intent.
Right, and I agree with that 100%. You know, I just am trying to figure out how, you know, cuz quite honestly, if we're looking at four monuments per site, you're basically berming those four, four spots. You're thinking of the worst case situation. So all of a sudden, you have four mounds. Is that an overall landscape plan design? And it could be yes, but it also could be a no. And that's a staff DRC review and that's it, okay.
Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Um, the charity staff has given us nine options.
I don't know what they were thinking.
They were doing their work, they were doing their work. And I think they did a very good job. I looked at them and I, you know, I tried to narrow the ones that I feel that will work for the city. And I tend to agree with you on five. And then I have seven. Five and seven are the ones that I feel can work.
For the one acre or for the 10 acre?
The, the seven is a 10. The five is the, you know, smaller, smaller.
Commissioner Singh, other, I'm sorry, other comments?
No, no, just giving you my, my choices.
Commissioners, Workman and Levy, you're on.
I'm overwhelmed with data.
Commissioner Workman.
I agree, I like, I like number five for the under 10. I do understand what Commissioner Benke's point about the pylon and then two additional monument signs seems excessive. But then I have to kinda consider would Burger King need that or do that? But it's kind of up to them. But I, I think number five for under, under 10. And then, can we mix and match some of these? I like number seven again, but I also did like the ability to point them on the right of way. So you're not overloading 42. So I don't know if there's a way to incorporate one with the other. Cuz I do like the ability to kind of direct them so they're not cluttered. And I think that was the, the goal of this. So I don't know if you can, if there'd be any consensus to work that or what anybody else thought about that?
Ms. Dean, I, I did have a question based around that. So under 10 acres, like the Burger King site is a, a smaller commercial property. Was there any thought where at that point, we simply, we, we don't have a monument sign ordinance and it falls back to square footage for the property, whatever it is? If they want the entire square footage to be in a monument sign and no pylon sign, they certainly could. But one of the things that I thought about was that we typically would only do this on an, on a, that's 10 acres or above. If you're 10 acres or below, you default back to our sign ordinance. And whatever square footage is allowed in your sign ordinance and however the applicant wants to spend that money, whether it's all in a pylon or no pylon and two monuments versus an over 10 acre, then we do specify. Does that help me with the struggles that that would cause?
We didn't contemplate that scenario in our different options, but I think it would get out at most scenarios where you're concerned with having too many monument signs on a property. Only concern would be many of our smaller lots, you currently have a, you know, one building, one story. Maybe if things start to pick up in development and you go multi-story, you'll have more, more wall area. That would be the only scenario where you could have probably multiple, multiple monument signs. But at that time, we can always revisit, ordinances can be changed.
Commissioner Benke.
I, after this talk, I'm, I'm inclined to suggest that we look at using number five.
And sorry, can you start with over or under 10?
Actually, as I'm reading, they're the same. The text on them is the same actually.
But not all of them, so if we start with...
True, true.
Five is under 10.
Right, and five is actually the same in both. So let's, either, either one, let's, we can look at that. It's up to two monuments for lots under 10 and up to four monuments for over 10. And then, and then number seven, which is a maximum of four per property, additional signs allowed with approval of a CUP or PUD, which, you know, at that point, they're starting to, we're gonna wanna look and see where are you putting them? How are you massing them? How is your landscaping working? And that all works. I do like number eight to help limit proximity. However, I think again, it could have additional language or other distance appropriate as approved by CUP or PUD. In other words, if someone came in and they had a, a pattern that was less than 300 feet apart, they still have the opportunity to come in and ask for us to consider that. And I'm not a fan of, of creating CUPs. But yet, at what point should this be reviewed for its overall coherence? And that was it, I think, is just using those three. That, that would be my suggestion.
And to clarify what you said, Commissioner Benke, really you're taking number five from, that has on both and you're simply adding the last sentence from number seven that says, additional signs may be allowed with approval of a CUP or PUD. Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct, because number five does say up to four allowed on lots over 10. So then, yes, adding additional signs allowed with the approval through a PUD or CUP process.
So you're really taking five from both sides of lots?
Correct.
You're adding the last sentence from number seven of over 10 acres in size. Just wanted to clarify.
Right, and then adding the three, the 300 feet to other freestanding, assuming that there's another pylon sign or something already on the property.
Commissioner Singh.
The eight, number eight is not an option. It's, it goes with five and seven. Clarifies five and seven.
Sure.
I'm, say that again, I'm sorry.
I'm saying that number eight is not an option. Five and seven are the options, but eight clarifies the, the distance between signs.
Yeah, eight does then bring up the distance between signs.
Right, right.
Okay. Commissioner Workman, other comments?
How do we wanna combine all these?
Well, I, I think, really, you're looking for where we're standing. And I think we're talking about landing with the under 10 and over 10 and the, the two and four with the ability to add signs with a CUP after four for a 10 acre site with a distance between, with some sort of minimum distance between those four pylon signs.
Between pylon, or between monuments.
It's actually all signs. All signs.
Monument or pylon.
Right.
Does that help? Did we further confuse you?
Definitely, no.
Are you ever going to bring us nine options ever again?
No, I will not. So this is a discussion item. So the next step would be for us to bring back an proposed ordinance, ordinance form.
Other questions or concerns that you have for us that you'd like us to clarify?
No, this was great, great discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean, thank you, Commissioners. I thought that went well. That brings us to item number five this evening, which we continue to postpone. Discussion for the, we're on to a 2017 Planning Commission work plan item, performance standards for conditional uses in the R1 zone. Our presenter this evening is Ms. Garros. As soon as Ms. Garros gets to the podium, we will turn the meeting over to her.
Thank you, Commissioners. The application, or this item is a discussion item. It actually dates back, I'm not even sure how far. Well, I think before probably everyone on the commission was on the commission. We had an application for a conditional use permit. It was for River Hills United Methodist Church. And in that application, very similar to the Breen Baptist Church conditional use permit that was considered this year. In that application, we had neighboring single family homes relatively close to where the addition was gonna be. The existing church was already closer, I believe, than the 50 feet. And the discussion kind of resulted from that, that, you know, maybe there's a need to take a look at some performance standards for these types of conditional uses. Largely because you're usually dealing with a different size building or a different kind of use, more like a utility kind of use for these conditional use permits that are, that are allowed. There have also been some questions. I believe when we were doing, I can't remember if it's for sure. I believe when we were looking at some cell tower applications, and it may even have been solar, actually, when we were looking at, you know, if you were adjacent to a, if you had a, had a school and that was adjacent to residential, how do we deal with, you know, that compatibility? Or, or what, what do we do there? So this is really an application that, or a discussion for you. What we tried to do here is to identify, you know, what all the uses are that are conditional uses in the district and just list them out for you. And then give you what the single family standards are. And if the Planning Commission would like to see some additional performance standards or changes in performance standards related to these conditional uses, what those would be and to obtain direction from you to do that. In addition to this, I did provide you with excerpts from several different zoning ordinances. And in some respects, ours is similar. A 50-foot setback, for instance, from a property line was relatively common from various cities. And it kinda goes from least or lesser restrictive all the way to the Minnetonka is the most restrictive. So the reason that it provided those is to just give you ideas, you know, of what other communities do and what some of those standards might be. Of the Planning Commission, if you're comfortable with leaving things as is, we're good with that. If you would like to see some performance standards, that's what we're looking to obtain direction from Planning Commission to be able to put that together and, and bring those back to you.
Ms. Garros, I have a couple of questions before we maybe help drive the, the discussion. The, the first question I have for you is, as staff, do you have concerns today of things that staff struggles with because of the way our, our, this is written? Things that are difficult for you to deal with or cause problems would be my, my first question. And then, and maybe before you answer that, I, I know that, now that I remember it, and, and I'm probably gonna rely on Commissioner Singh. I think we had an application from River Hills, but it was in tandem to a previous application that caused this that they had not built, if I remember that correctly. Cuz there was, there was two applications and the application that came in front of us, correct, Commissioner Singh?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Was a smaller accessory building and some other things. But then it was driven back to the original issue with River Hills. And that particular thing had, was approved but was never built, if I remember correctly. Is that, do I, do I remember the story correctly? Okay. So with that being said, Ms. Garros, do you have, what frustrates or what is difficult for applicants or for staff if you believe that our ordinance was, was written differently? If you had a magic wand, what is that?
From a staff standpoint, they're conditional use permits. And that gives the ability for the Planning Commission to look at the site and to identify, you know, what those parameters are. That's kinda the whole purpose of a conditional use permit, is to consider the site specifics. And, and to go from there. I think that, from my perspective, that has worked well. However, if you would like to provide more, I guess, guidance, you can always add that to the ordinance as well. From my standpoint, I believe it functions well the way we work it now.
Okay, then I have, I'm sorry, I have, I do have one more question then I'll turn. So with that being said, I appreciate that, that answer. There was a couple of things that in, I, I'm, I'm not even gonna reference the 48 pages from Minnetonka. But from my time on the Planning Commission, and we had some of this with Breen and some other stuff, if you think about, I think it's page one of the Plymouth zoning, sub, subline five as an example. It talks about loading docks and drive up facilities shall, shall be positioned as to minimize internal site accessories and adjacent to a residential district. Okay. Do you believe with what you said, if we left the ordinance the way it is and a conditional use permit or a PUD, that you could address like that as an example as a concern? Cuz I, I kinda liked that that was stated in here, but I'm not looking to have an overstated ordinance. And, but that is something specifically. If you, number four, talking about off-street loading. Number five, talking about loading docks. Number six, whenever a non-resident is adjacent to residential use, a buffer area for screening. And I do think all of that is addressed the way we have the ordinance written today. I just wanted to confirm that with you.
That's correct.
Okay.
With the exception of the loading docks, we do have parameters in the, for commercial, industrial, for loading dock areas and noise, and they do have to be 100% screened.
The Chase application on 42 that backed up to the neighborhood, correct? I don't know if it was Chase at the time, but it was a, it was a granite shop.
It happened to be that building, yes, the granite shop.
Even the, the industrial building that backs up to Realoma. It faces Cliff Road because the loading docks would otherwise have faced the single family houses.
I still hear those trucks at night.
And we did, from a staff perspective, we did advise Breen not to put that there. But they decided to do that. I think that that would be something that if you like number five and we want to make that, you know, this is the deal rather than, you know, having it negotiated, we certainly could add this.
It was the only thing, as I read the backgrounds, just from my time on the Planning Commission, that I felt we had had brought in front of us several times. It would be nice if we could, from the standpoint of that was truly one of the things that is going to impact the neighborhood.
Exactly.
If there is no loading dock, then it's not an issue. But, and, and Commissioner Singh will certainly have a chance to weigh in here. He has more time on the Planning Commission than I do. And you can see if there was other things. But that was the one thing that I felt had come in front of us more than any other thing. I'll stop. Commissioners, Commissioner Singh?
I, I think I, I, my recollection is, is almost 100% of what you, what you just said. For me, I think what we have now is working. There is always, the Planning Commission can always make some exceptions depending on the situation. And I, 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 I'm in favor of giving ourselves that, if you want, in quotes, leeway to do that. I, I personally, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. I, I read it today and I, I said it to myself and I read it again. And I said, you know, I don't see we need to tighten it up or change anything here.
Will you, you're done. Commissioner Levy.
Thank you. I'm hearing that if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Kind of where it sets and the system seems to be working.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Commissioner Benke.
I got some questions, Deb, here. From your conditional use spreadsheet, looks like the whole first section, nothing within 50 feet of our district, no building, and architectural design and service structure compatible to neighborhood. I think that leaves an extremely subjective task for staff, doesn't it? I mean, what's architecturally compatible to residential neighborhood but houses? And if it's not a house, then everything... And if it's not a house, then everything else would come, would need a CUP.
I think that because we're a fully developed city, and we, the conditional use permits that I have worked with have always been additions to, you know, in existing, that it's not been difficult, if you had to start from scratch, yeah, I think, I think that would be much more challenging.
Okay, and I guess that goes to sort of where I was coming back to this. A lot of the uses here are historically needed in residential areas.
Yes.
I mean, you go way back to when plating first started, and there was always an acre given, or a section given to the school. There was always a section given to a church. The encouragement of having those integrated into the neighborhood is very much part of how a neighborhood functions. I think the issue comes in when you have a, a structure that is in a residential neighborhood, but it has non-residential uses, and I think the loading dock is the prime example. That would typically be an industrial or a commercial use element. And I guess what I'm hearing now is that we have an ordinance against loading docks facing residential in industrial and commercial, but we don't have it in residential or residential?
Correct. I believe we amended the language, I don't recall what it says, but we did need to address, this goes back to 2008, when the city did a special study for commercial, industrial building materials. And an issue that came up over and over again, that was presented from the public input, was, you know, we're next to these things, and it's noisy, you know? They're supposed to keep their doors shut, but they don't. So how can, how can we deal with that? So I know that we added some language to the ordinance, but it was just those commercial, industrial uses. Something that we could do is bring that language back to you at a future meeting, and just let you know what that is, and if you think that that's something applicable, maybe we just broaden that to have it apply to these uses as well.
I agree, I think that's a good thing to do. I think the key, to me, is that it's not hard to modify a loading dock situation from a design standpoint to minimize that noise. And quite honestly, with Breen, I was very surprised that we weren't able to recommend to them even turning it 90 degrees and including a screen wall. It would not have changed how they accessed the building with the things they told us they were bringing in through that dock. It would have totally screened it from the neighbor, it would have not been an issue, in my opinion. There's too many other places out there where I've seen it done well. And that as, as an individual item, I would love to see added. Just, right now, standing seam roof, so we're going to see that as part of other material reviews, right?
Yes.
Okay, I want to get into that. And then just to clarify, under fences and walls in excess of eight feet, I thought that the height restriction was eight feet, oh, six feet? Because we had, one of the first items that came in when I joined the commission was a neighbor who wanted to put up an eight-foot fence, and the ordinance only allowed six in a residential area, so is this a misprint, or?
You can have, you can have taller fences, up to eight feet, but they have to be set back, they have to basically meet the principal structure setbacks. If you wanted to have them on a property line, there are six feet is the maximum.
Okay, that was, okay, thank you, that helps.
That was a homeowner on Lake Alum?
No, Wood Lake.
Wood, okay.
Yep. If you can go to your background on page two. Is that on the screen, or?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just figuring, yeah.
Oh, I don't have my, I have everything but my report up.
Oh, okay. I guess, under compatibility, I guess I found a couple of other subjective areas that I was curious how you're dealing with. The first paragraph under compatible, it ends, "Some but not all design forms adjacent structures while maintaining some of its own uniqueness." And "some" is such a weak word in design. I'm, I'm, I mean, how do you, I mean, you could have one piece, and it would be, two pieces, and it could be some, but again, is this giving staff any problem when someone's asking for a CUP?
That's actually a very good point. We just had a discussion with the city council at, I had a work session, talking about this compatibility definition and how it applies and not. And they gave direction for us to come back with an ordinance amendment to deal with those exact issues. The language is very similar to what a lot of cities have. I haven't figured out yet, I don't, I haven't found it in statutes or state rules, but I'm thinking that there probably was some case that happened somewhere, and everyone was advised to update their ordinances, because it's virtually the same, identical language. But it is, that is something that council directed, so we will be bringing, actually, that ordinance back to you here within probably the next couple of months.
So actually, where I tend to be critical of a lot of things, obviously, it could actually work to staff's benefit, because if there's any question, you can just kick it to, kick it to us as a CUP. Okay. And the next two comments say the same thing, a likeness to a degree to cause monotony, and that is hugely subjective. The same, B is the same thing. Roof, we already talked about. When I got to the next one on driveways, I was, I was actually curious how a corner lot cannot have more than three driveway openings, and an interior lot shall not have more than two. I guess this would be more on larger commercial and industrial lots than?
Actually, these are residential. This is right in the single-family standard, yeah.
Okay.
Been there longer than the hills.
Well, right, right. And then the last one, too, driveways in excess of 15%. I've, working in this industry for 40 years, I've never seen a driveway over 10% acceptable by, by a city. So why would we have to get a variance for one over 15%? Why wouldn't it start at 10?
Actually, that percentage was recommended by the city engineer.
Okay.
We thought that that was fairly steep as well. I know, it's probably been nine or 10 years ago, we had a lot that had come back tax-deferred, or somebody purchased it, and I mean, it was on a hill, you know, like this.
Was that the Morrison Hill lot?
Yes, I believe it was, yep. And so we processed that as a variance, and I think as a result of that, they put this language in to allow you to have, or at least the city engineer, to have that discretion.
Down under landscaping. I guess I'm curious here that we're, we haven't moved, given the last, the first item with the Bs, I'm curious as to, we're still requiring sod and things, and there's nothing in here yet that allows for alternative maintainable natural grasses and things like that.
We actually do have that in the landscape ordinance, that you can do that, it's another section. Yeah, I just, for trying to give you like some idea of what is a standard in single-family, but yes, we do allow that.
Okay. And that's the points I had.
Commissioners, other comments? First, Commissioner Workman?
I just have a quick follow-up to something Commissioner Benkey and Deb mentioned about the roof. That's coming back to us as a separate item, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for that.
Yes, we will be bringing that back. That is part of the compatibility, compatibility ordinance.
Okay.
Will be part of that, yes.
I had some questions on that, but if that's coming back to us, I can wait till that's something.
Completely different process. This is more about simply just focusing on what's allowed in an R1, and then a lot of the R1 information here is simply for our informational background piece.
Well, this, this is only listed as necessary, as a conditional use, because it's a conditional use under the other ordinance. So once we talk about it there, it may or may not end up here.
Correct.
I just, I would like to see some modification to that, so when that does come up, I'd like to discuss that whenever that day comes, so.
Yeah, the compatibility ties into, well, all of those things. Colors, you know, materials, design, all of those kinds of things. And really, the stance from the council was more, you know, let people do what they want to do, as long as they're going to improve their property, so. That will, that will definitely be coming back to you.
Typically, what we see coming back to us is going to be less restrictive than what we have today, given council direction.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, other comments? Deb, does that help at all?
That helps, so, would you like me?
She didn't give us 72 pages, but nine, not nine of them.
Would you like me to bring back to you at our next meeting just what the commercial, industrial standards are with regard to the loading docks? And then take a look at that, and?
Yeah, my personal opinion is less is more, this is working, but yet, that piece might be one, you know, quite honestly, any schools, churches, libraries, I mean, other, other non-residential uses and residential that are significantly different. We, I think we want to look at how they work, and a loading dock would be a non, not a normal thing that you'd have in a residential area. So protecting that from the neighbors, I think, is important. So I think we use that as an example. You probably won't find too many other things.
Commissioner, is it? Commissioner Singh?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, commissioners, what about if we, staff bring this item back to us? In the meantime, Deb emailed us the things you're talking about.
Sure.
So we can look at it, and if we need to make any changes, we have the opportunity, if it's brought back to us, if things are okay, we just bring it up and move it on.
I don't want extra work if we can, if we can get past it, if you're comfortable with it.
No problem, we will do that.
Because like I said, I was just concerned about the dock thing and giving you a tool to have that happen, where however, and maybe it doesn't have to be specifics to docks, but to Commissioner Benkey's point, how the property functions and how traffic or something is affecting the residential neighborhood could be the, the piece that might make your life a little easier, and would also help the applicant know a little more upfront prior to them getting to us to see if they could. It's not adjacent to a residential property, but the best example I would have would be Costco and the walls and the planting around the dock. If J.L. Beers was a residential area, how did they, what did they do to, you know? And in that case, we, we pulled the dock away from the residential area, and it faces the commercial area, and the store faces the residential.
Yes.
Yeah, so, okay.
All right.
Does that help?
That helps, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. And number six is also, Ms. Garros. It's a discussion for, we have rocketed onto an actual item on 2017 Planning Commission work item, and that is the architectural review tool that we've had in place for a couple of years.
Yes. This is an item, as indicated, really on the planning commission's work plan. This, we have been using this tool for a few years. It is on our website, and we actually even have a more simplified version on the website as well. This is something that staff, planning commission, and we had a planning consultant help us put this together based on, you know, photographs and things around the city and in other communities. And the intent of this, there's a couple of things. One of them was, there was a Heart of the City Design Review Committee that met, and they reviewed all the projects in Heart of the City. And that was disbanded, and then there was feeling by some of the council members and some planning commission members that, how are we going to replace that? We need to have, you know, there was a strong feeling that we need to have some type of architectural guidance, and, and how can that occur if we don't have the HLC, DRC? So one of the ways that we chose to address it is to come up with an architectural review tool that would give the public and applicant's guidance for the types of design elements. We have in the ordinance, we list the materials, we list, you know, specifics about, you can do various options, X percent glass, X percent, you know, treatment, a rounded door front. Those types of things are already in the ordinance, but the design part of it really was not. So this architectural review tool was established to address that. In addition to that, a lot of the applications that you see are planned unit developments, and even with some variance applications, or they are requests by people to do something other than what the ordinance standard is. And council thought, too, that there should be something put out there for the public to know that when you ask for a deviation, the city is looking for something in return. And a lot of times, that's a higher, higher design for buildings, materials, et cetera. So this actually sets what those examples are, as opposed to just, you know, it's my idea that we're doing this, or it's the applicant's idea, or whatnot. So we have been using this for a couple of years now, and you've seen this with applications. Basically, set up very simply. We have, we identify when plans come in and they come before you that what materials and what designs, criteria, are, are they being met? Yes or no? Are, do they exceed the minimum requirements? That's what the E is. Are they applicable or not? That's what the N A, not applicable, are. And it goes through a whole host of different, different types of architectural design that are viewed as desirable by the city. And both the planning commission and city council agreed on, on this, and so this is what we've been using. And as you can see, yep, it's about a six-page, six-page document. So with that, this is a discussion item for planning commission, and we're here to find out if, you know, planning commission wants changes to this. If you feel that it's working as is, if you'd like to do something else, it's really your opportunity and your work plan item. We're just looking for direction.
Commissioners?
Sure, would you ask, yeah, the same question you asked to the last one? I think, I think start with that, it's, I think, let's find out what they think.
Well, I do have that answer, I did ask them that.
Well, yeah, we do.
I know, I, I was, thought someone might ask. Ms. Garros, I'd like to have you tell the commissioners, is this a tool that works for staff? Is it viable? Do you struggle with it? Should we have it at all? Does it ease in the application process? Would be my, my question for you.
I think from a staff perspective, it's useful. It's most useful when we first sit down with an applicant, so that they get an idea of, you know, if you're looking for deviations for a PUD, you know, these are the kinds of elements that we want to see, and they're, you know, kind of good, better, best types of, types of things. But having something that has pictures in it, and that it's relatively easy, you know, to go through and score, I think that has been very helpful for us in working with the development community. Ms. Dean can comment on that as well?
I would concur. I use it in just about every meeting that I have, meeting with the property owner that's speaking about developing, redeveloping, redeveloping, hand it to them. We go through it, I point out the different good, better, best examples, expectations of the city, of course, city code as well, but I think it's a great visual example. I came from a city prior to Burnsville that did not have a checklist like this at the time, and we would use photo examples of recently approved projects within the city, but it's nice to have something firmed up that we could easily provide to, to our customers. It's available on our city website, we can drop in a link and send that to anybody that we communicate via email or the phone to, so I, I think it's easy to work with. Most recently, I worked with, and with one of our consultants, WSB, on the Park Dental Building, recent addition. First meeting we had with the architect, handed this to them, said, you're, this is a planned unit development request, these are the expectations. I think they took that to heart, as you could see in their building design. In that case, it worked out really well, so that's what I have to add.
Thanks.
Yep, you're welcome.
Yeah, go ahead.
Commissioner Levy?
I have just one question, thank you, Mr. Chair. Do you feel there are any gaps in here that would make it more useful? You're indicating it's useful, but are there things that could be added to it that would make it even more?
I think it does a good job of covering, you know, the, it gives, it gives... I think it does a good job of covering, you know, the, it gives, it gives a, a good, it's a good reference tool for developers. And kind of a consistent thing. And I think it covers all of the basic design elements. So I don't anticipate or see a need for something different, Ms. Dean.
Commissioner Levy, this is not rule of law. This is that applicants in front of us, they're asking for variances, and this is a simple tool for us to give it to them upfront. So they kind of understand what we're looking for to hopefully ease that process all the way through the application.
I'm, I'm just asking if there are other, other-
It was just the way you asked the question I wanted to clarify.
A couple of squares more, maybe, that would be, would make it easier for the developer. I, that's all I'm asking, are the gaps.
I'll just work down the line, started with Commissioner Workman.
I feel like this has been a successful tool for us, and I know that there's probably some developers that would rather go before a body than a, a tool. But I, I, you know, I'd say the large majority of people have taken well to this, and I don't see any need to change it or, or modify it. I think it's been good.
Thank you. Commissioner Singh.
I've just heard that both of our planners think it works for them, and they have not recommended any changes. I would go with it, keep it.
Thank you. Commissioner Singh, Commissioner Benkey.
I'm, I'm the other way, hundred percent right now on this as it sits. And only because I don't think it deals with architecture. And I think that at a minimum, it should be relabeled. Architecture is not a checklist. And you don't get architecture by simply saying, if you do this, you do this, you do this, you're okay. And I think that's part of the problem with this. I think it gives us some better projects, but I don't think it gives us architecture. If, if, and I, I think it was best exemplified with, with the comment that the Chase representative had when he was talking about this at the last meeting, that, you know, he turned to Ms. Dean and said, "Well, I, I did everything that was on this list." He, to me, he believes that if he checks all these boxes, he's approved. And I don't think that that's an accurate way to use this tool, number one. And I don't believe it'll ever give you good architecture, because you could combine eight or nine different things here, and it could become a hodgepodge. Okay? I did notice in the background that council wanted Planning Commission to address architectural design. And that's right in the history of this thing. However, we do want the developers to know what the city's development standards are. And I, I don't disagree that there are architectural elements here in this document that help give developers ideas about what we look for. I struggle with it as a checklist, and personally, I struggle with the boxes that are filled in there. I think that under building facade, a no or a yes are, are objective comments. It either meets the standard or it doesn't. I think the exceeds is, is, shouldn't be there. I don't think any matters. It's, it's either a yes or a no. So I think taking the subjectivity out of it at a minimum is what I'd recommend here. I think the comments from staff, that this is a great picture book, suggests a direction to me where this should become more of just that. A picture book with some direction, a design manual, a design guidance. I, you know, I, I moved this forward. I, I moved to get this, I wanted to see how it would work. I think right now, I'd move that this is not an architectural review tool, it's a design review tool. And I, I really think that labeling it architectural does it a disservice. I, I do also want to point out that I don't believe this document incorporates the HOC standards. I don't think that outside of the, the under building facade, where it says, talks about modules occurring in a different pattern. In height, in HOC, I don't believe it incorporates any of the Heart of the City Design Framework standards. So if it's being reviewed, if a building in the Heart of the City is being reviewed against it, it, we're not, we're not getting that information. And I think that's a critical flaw to it right now, personally. Deb, would you agree with that?
I'd let Ms. Dean address that. This is generalized, you know, throughout the city. Heart of the City still has the Heart of the City Design, you know, guideline manual.
Okay, and-
Right. And, and with any project, like Deb said, this is, this is pretty generalized. And we do take the time to look at the specific ordinance requirements, whether it's Heart of the City and the added design guidelines, or just the commercial standards. There are specific things that we, we need to look at, that we do look at.
And again, I'm struck by the comment that the Chase, that Joe from Chase mentioned, because he specifically turned to you and said, "Well, I, I looked at the design, design manual and we checked off all the boxes." And I'm paraphrasing him, but to me, if he was referring to this, he was not getting the full design framework in Heart of the City.
They did receive the full design-
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that he didn't get it. What I'm saying is, is if he thought that using this tool would get him all the way through the design framework, I think that's where the, the flaw goes. I, I think that there's other problems here too. I think that historically, Burnsville had a problem with Burnsville brick. I don't know if you understand that, that terminology, but for a long time, Burnsville wanted brick buildings, and that was all we had. And it got to the point where it was labeled that. And in this case, we are now dictating, under building facade, we're dictating combinations of materials. And basically, it drives a problem in that it essentially requires polymorphic architecture. It requires buildings to have so much texture and things going on that it, it creates a different kind of architecture by itself. Tom Tisher, who was dean of the School of Architecture for well over a decade, actually wrote an op-ed in the Star Tribune about how all of the apartment buildings in Minneapolis look alike now. They are all doing the same thing. And essentially, our design frame, our, this, this document, and quite honestly, because it comes from our ordinance, our ordinance is doing some of the same thing. It's, it's starting to limit the kind of architecture that we get from, that we could get from people. And I, I see that as not necessarily part of the problem with these design guidelines, but part of the problem with our ordinance. But then we document it in our design guidelines here too. So it, it does create a problem here. Edina went through a similar problem in their residential neighborhoods because they had a, a max height per house, and they had an average height for a roof. And the two, they, people were starting to build the new houses, and they were getting bigger and bigger on the lots. And people were trying to essentially get, put as much house on the lots as they could. And they were ending up with what they called A-frame houses, because the roof, the peak of the roof was allowed to be so high compared to the mean height. And the mean height was what everything went by. The city changed their rules, and what they got now is they have squat houses that still fill the, fill the envelope for the house. Ordinances drive architecture. And yet, the only way that we're going to get better architecture, I think, is to take some of these rules away. And that's why there are parts of this design guidelines that I think are good, you know, in terms of where they started. I, I think it needs to move forward from this. But there's also areas, I think, that, that try to, that push people into a direction that they may not have wanted to go. And because of that, the architecture could suffer. And by architecture, I'm talking about, you know, the whole building as opposed to just the elements. Under landscaping, for example, there, there's a, a comment, yeah, oh, thank you, Deb, that's, yeah, that's a couple down, I think, from this one. Right there, under, underneath the first picture. "Diverse landscaping beautifies the site, creates space, caters to wildlife." This is an excellent statement, because buildings by themselves create space as well. And, you know, I mean, you guys got to remember, I've, I've been, I've been in this business for forty years, and this is what I do on a day-to-day basis. And what I'm, what I'm seeing is a lack of some of this as we go with the new construction in the city. And, and it bothers me, which is why I ramble on and on like this about it. It, it just strikes me as we're missing the boat in some cases. We're getting eighty-five percent of what we could have instead of a hundred percent. And does that mean that the eighty-five percent projects aren't good? No, they, they're, they're good projects. I just think that sometimes a little bit more could, could turn it into a great project. And that's typically where I bring up my points, or I try to, anyway.
Other?
Yeah, I just, it went on and on and on here.
Okay.
Anyway, I mean, I, I've spoken about this stuff before. I know you guys all have heard me, and I had nauseam. Not always where I have undivided attention. But I, I think that the tool needs to have some tweaks to it. I think that we could recommend some things that would continue to keep it easy to use for staff. And perhaps take away some of the issues that I see as, as hurting architectural variety and design in Burnsville. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benkey. Ms. Garros, I'm in support of the tool. We did spend a lot of time on it, not for taking, I respect Mr. Commissioner Benkey's comments. I want to make sure that we, I struggle with us having, because truly, the discussion here is about this tool. You didn't come to us this evening and talk about our, our zoning regulations and our requirements. Our, our discussion this evening is specifically about this tool. And I, I do hear from staff that it's a useful tool, notwithstanding that we may have at some point some changes that need to be made to, to different things. My goal has always been to give as much information to the applicant as we possibly can upfront, so they're not surprised. And in many cases, we do have questions, but in some cases, I'm only focused on, does the building or the applicant that's put in front of us this evening meet our ordinance? And with that, I think you have consensus. I mean, we have one, one, hang on just a second. We, we have one, one of the five that believes we might need to tweak this. I do think we have consistency or majority from the Commission this evening that we could certainly move forward with this tool as is. But notwithstanding, my request would always be, once again, anytime staff thinks a tool that we have asked for that could be tweaked to make your life easier or to give the applicant a better process coming to us, I think we should always look at it. But we'd probably need some specifics, and I would like to have staff tell us when that comes up. But if you think it's a good tool, you do this day in and day out, I'm going to refer back to your personal experience. Commissioner Benkey.
Just, Chair, a couple of things you just mentioned. You know, I think the issue of meets the ordinance, I think, is where the biggest problem I have with this is. Zoning code and building code are all minimum standards. So when a project comes in that meets the ordinance, I think we have to remember that that is a minimum standard. And I think the biggest problem that I've had is that it, we sit here and people come to us and they say, "I want to do this. I want you to give me this, this, and this, but I want you to do this." Now, keep in mind, I'm, I'm arguing this from both sides of the fence. Because when I stand on that side of the dais, I want to get as, I want to have as little things added to my projects as possible. When I sit on this side, I have to look out for what I believe helps the city of Burnsville. And to me, when a person, an applicant comes in and is asking for, you know, we'll take Chase, for example, they're asking for parking deviations and all this kind of stuff. We, we need to sort of weigh those against what the city is getting back from that. And if all we're doing is checking these boxes and saying, "This meets the code, this meets the code, this meets the code," then at what point does the applicant get direction, solid direction, that he, he really needs to step it up to compensate for the things that he's, he's asking for in a PUD situation, for example, or a CUP? You know, I mean, we have a better, good, better, best. From my standpoint, it's hard to tell from picture to picture that one is better than the other. To me, it seems like the pictures here currently are three items that demonstrate different item, the different, different ways of handling the problem. And again, to me, if the document was more of a picture book, it could possibly deal with that in a better sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Garros, other questions from us? No?
If there's, I mean, if you'd like to, you know, take out, you know, some of the-
I think you have consensus from the Commission this evening.
Ask a quick follow-up question. I'm, and I, we've heard Commissioner Benkey's talk about this before, but I'm just wondering what a solid solution, or I guess revision, would be to kind of accomplish those things that, that you just spoke about. And I'm, I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, no, I, I mean-
Because I, I don't disagree with a lot of what you said, and I don't just, I haven't disagreed with a lot of what you've said in the past. But I just want to, I would want to know what the direction would be.
I, I see it graphically as, as being a bit awkward. I mean, I see that the text is more dominant than the pictures. I, I would love to see the photos larger. A lot, I know a lot of time was spent on accumulating these photos, and I think some of them are heavily cropped. It'd be nice if, if, you know, you really had a better sense of what we were really looking at on those individual photos. I could see adding text, arrows, for example, to document specifically where some of those features are. Like I say, I think we could get rid of the E and the N A columns personally, and keep it so much more subjective as far as staff is concerned. It either meets the standard or it doesn't. And beyond that, if it comes before us, we can make determination beyond that. I think that some of the sections could be expanded and others could be shrunk. I mean, having an equal number of pictures of bike racks to, to roof profiles doesn't make a lot of sense to me. You know, there's just some, like I say, I think there's tweaks to it that, that we could make and continue to use it as a tool that helps the city of Burnsville, but yet actually, I think, make it more valuable.
And the goal is, sorry.
Commissioner Workman.
Is, is to, you know, to help kind of raise the bar a little bit and increase the minimums. Instead of just meeting the minimums and calling it good. Which is, I think, what I've understood over the course of the last two years, is that the minimum maybe could be better. And is there a way to manipulate this tool to raise that minimum? And would this be an opportunity to continue to work on this tool and make revisions as a planning commission? Or is that now?
Ms. Garros, your comment.
If you, I mean, we are doing the study. WSB is looking at commercial industrial materials and what other communities do. If you want, we could bring this back, you know, at the time that that is done. And maybe there's some modifications kind of based on that direction. Certainly, if you want to remove, you know, some of the, the reviews, you know, just to do a yes, no, we can certainly do that. That's, you know, not an issue at all. We're, we're looking for direction from Planning Commission, I guess, as to, to what you'd like to do, so.
Commissioner Singh.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I, I think I respect the expertise that Commissioner Benkey brings to this commission. And some of the things he talks about, I have no idea what he's talking about. I got to be honest with you.
I'll work on that.
No, 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 that's not your fault. It's, it's your expertise. That's what you, you've been doing for forty years. And I have tremendous respect for what you bring. I may not understand everything, but the fact that you research these things and bring it to us, I think we are, one thing we are all agreed upon is that we need to be on the same page. Because we are all, we are here to work, to improve things in Burnsville, to give the, the applicants and the developers the guidelines so that makes it easy when you work with staff. And the end result is that our architecture within the city is enhanced, and the bar is raised, the minimum bar is raised. I don't think we ought to let it go without some response. Let's do something about it. One of the things Commissioner Benkey said, that this thing should not be called architecture design tool, because it does not determine the architecture of the city. Yeah, that's, that's, that's an important comment, he means. I mean, we can tweak it to, to make it more- I mean, if we can tweak it to, to make it more applicable, whatever is more applicable, let's do it. We don't have to get this done today. It is something that is, we can work on. I mean, you know, he comes prepared and he makes the notes and he's, he has points. And I think we should give him the benefit of the doubt and let's continue to work on it. I mean, when he brings them, we can discuss them. If we don't agree with him, well, he has to accept that. But we should not let it go. That's my, my, my two cents, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Singh, then, if you were going to give staff some direction from the standpoint of what we would want to change, I, I do have some concerns right now. We have a fair amount on staff's plate from the standpoint of ex, of external materials. And there's a fair amount of things that we are working on as a city. And truly, to change this every week until we have zeroed in on what those changes are seems to me to be a, not a great use of, of their time.
Mr. Chair, I did not see.
But I'm just, I want to, if we're going to try to narrow down and give staff some direction, how, how would you, how would you help with wording what staff should look at? If we're going to, you know, what exactly they should tweak or the timeframe, help me with how we would word that.
The, the things that Commissioner Benkey mentioned, to me, he did his research. He has ideas. That's his field, the work he does. I think, I'm not saying, I know staff has a lot on their plate, but there is merit to what he has said. And staff doesn't have to bring back all the changes he recommends. Staff can look, take them, look at them, and it doesn't take weeks to look at them. And whatever they feel that he has recommended, whatever they feel that will be applicable or raise the bar, let them send, include it and send it back to us.
I guess what I was, what I was trying to get at, early when I was on the planning commission, we had a work session at one point where we weren't at the dais and it was televised, but we had a, a group session where the city council was involved and the planning commission was involved. And it was a session that we all worked together to try to give you some direction. And that's what, Commissioner Singh, that's what I was trying to get. How do we, how do we facilitate something like this? And it may be as possible that at some point we commit that it'll be on a joint work session where we get feedback from the council, we get feedback from the commission, and feedback from staff as to, as to what works and what, because I was trying to get at the line list of stuff that Commissioner Benkey had versus trying to, how we would facilitate that was, guess, where I was trying to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the track. What I would like to see is, let us sit down, even the planning commission. Let's have our own work session and go through these things. It take us two hours one night, let's get it done.
Commissioner Levy.
Along that line, that's it, some architects involved. This is a tool for them. As Commissioner Benkey said, you know, this is a design tool, not architectural tool. I don't want a Weisman museum in Burnsville, but I don't want Leviton either, or Levitown either. I don't want it to be the same. A lot of these things here, I see, there's a little difference in elevation, so, but boy, you guys, I drive around Burnsville, I see an awful, you know, I'm in the right place and same, it's the same. Colors may be different, but it's basically the same. Can we get in this work session, get some professionals in here who would be using this tool, or however we want to name it, whether tool is the right or not, to, you know, give us some guidance as to what is most helpful to them?
Typically, Commissioner Levy, what we've done in the past is staff has reached out to people and then gotten feedback. We don't typically ask them to come to the meeting, but staff will interview them, get their feedback and, and bring us. And sometimes it's previous applicants, it's other things. But once again, it'll have to get kind of worked into their, to their schedule. But it's difficult sometimes. We've, I know the city will have multiple meetings to talk about commercial property redevelopment and try to get the commercial people here. But we can get probably better and more broad feedback if we make it simpler for them to give us feedback about what they liked and they didn't, and they can quickly give it to us and then staff gives us that feedback versus not necessarily getting a, you know, we could certainly have an open public hearing if they wanted to talk. But I think in the past, we've had much better luck trying to, to get their feedback and then staff reports some of that, along with anybody that wants to come to a meeting. But if we limit to just the people that come to the meeting, we can get a, a pretty poor turnout. Commissioner?
Thank you. Yeah, I think, a lot went on while I, so I'm trying to walk my way through all the comments here. I'm not suggesting currently that staff goes and makes a lot of changes and brings it back because there are so many other architectural elements, details that are currently in process. What I'm, what I'm basically trying to say is that, just like with the, the buildings, this is good, I think it should be better. And that's my opinion. All right. When it comes to the other professionals, I think that's good, but I think the background pointed out that that's been tried in the past. One of the other ways was to advertise for additional design staff, you know, design people to come to, and that's problematic because you need someone to volunteer. I think that the hardest part of this is the feeling that you four who are not in the industry don't have opinions and you do. And I think that is the biggest key here. And Chair, to your comments about trying to keep this upfront to the, to the developers, I agree, but we can't give them everything. We've got to, we can give them direction, we can give them pieces. That's where this could and does to a point, just in my opinion, not as good as it could. This, this can help, but because it looks at pieces, I don't feel it gives a developer a good handle on architecture. And I'm using the term to be different than architectural details or, or details that meet the planning standards. And that's really what I'm seeing here is, these are, these are only planning standards that deal with how a building looks. And that's not architecture. No. So really, I think what I'd suggest is that if staff continues to use it, each of us can look at it and use it as the projects come in with the goal that as these other architectural changes get heard and discussed, those get plugged into here, too. And the next iteration of this document could perhaps take a little different direction if my comments are followed. And that's all it is, is my comments. I do, you know, just as a side, I do appreciate what Commissioner Levy just said. I had a bunch of other stuff here, but it's not to this document. But just briefly, you know, it's things where social media is, is, people go on social media and make comments and, you know, paraphrasing a couple of comments is, you know, oh geez, they're putting something in Burnsville, or there's one down Apple Valley, it's no different than 42 and Cedar now. And my goal has always been to try to direct Burnsville into being unique. You know, we're at a, we're at a crossroads here. We're at 42 and 35 and 35. We're at the crossroads of three major highways. We're at the crossroads of 35E and the River. We have a, a location here that is unique to the metro. And because of that, I've always felt that that should be reflected in how we handle things. We shouldn't, we shouldn't necessarily be just, oh yeah, I'll go, I can go to, I can go to Burnsville and get it, or I can go down Apple Valley. You know, the uniqueness of it, I think, is something that I've always felt that we should be able to work from. And that's what, that really is what drives my comments here, is, is that goal of trying to improve what we have. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Garros, I guess to try to bring things together, Commissioner Benkey's suggestion is we don't make any changes immediately. Commissioner Singh and Commissioner Workman and Commissioner Levy have asked that we do some sort of group session. So I, I think probably the best way to try to conclude the conversation is I would like it to be an open item. I'd like it to be a tool that we try to, if, if we can work it into the schedule in 2017. I know we've got some challenges. I do think that there's probably some steps that would need to happen first is to get some other stuff behind us. But depending on what people's schedules like, does it, I think we at least have consensus that we'll look at it. It'll stay in place as it is today, but the consensus would be as we put several other things to bed from a standpoint of some uses of materials and we, we move on from some of that. Because we do have a fair amount of stuff that staff's working on, on other things. Once that's done, then we would go back and look at this tool and ensure that this tool matches our ordinance. No different than once we complete the comp plan, we're going to have to go back and make sure that our zoning ordinances meet the comp plan. Would that be a good way to, to describe it?
Absolutely.
So, does that help, Ms. Garros?
Yes.
Commissioners, do we believe we have at least consensus around that?
Yep.
I think we do. Okay.
Thank you.
With that, I think that takes us to item number seven, which is, any updates from commissioners? None? Staff, do you have any updates this evening?
The next planning commission meeting is Monday, May 8th. We'll pass out the draft agenda in just a second. And then the next comprehensive plan advisory committee meeting is May 15th here at 6:00 PM at City Hall. The topic is transportation.
Okay. Thank you. With any other updates, commissioners, I would stand for a motion for adjournment. Moved by, everybody spoke at once. Moved by Commissioner Benkey, second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you and have a safe evening.